Morning.
Good morning.
This time I will call the October 3, 2016, meeting of the Cumberland County Commission for Order, and I would call on Glenn Adams, Vice Chairman, for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you so very much. I would like to introduce Reverend Philip Marks. Reverend Marks, you've become four. Reverend Marks is the pastor at Pleasant Grove Church of Christ, Disciples of Christ here in Fayetteville, down on Race Path Street. He's been there since July the 10th, 2016. He has proudly served this community in the United States Army. He has, what he tells me, the love of his life, the elder Teneke Marks here today, along with his three children, Philip Junior, Christian, and Leila. Mr. Chairman, Reverend Marks is here to do the invocation, and then we'll follow that with the pledge.
Let us pray. O gracious Lord, the Creator and sustainer of this beautiful earth, we humbly bow and beseech you on this day. We ask that you guide this august body of commissioners as they carry out their responsibilities as elected officials. We pray that you keep their minds fastened on the constituents they serve. Lord, give them a servant's heart. Help them remember the least of these in times like these. Protect this board of commissioners. Give them the spirit of unity to govern even in a time where it's easy to remain politically divisive. Bless their homes and families. Bless this wonderful county, this amazing state, and the United States of America. This we ask with grateful hearts. Amen.
I put the pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, County Manager?
Yes, sir. Item number one is approval of the agenda. And Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I have two additions to the agenda for your consideration. First of all, a recognition of all the partners involved in the flooding event last Thursday. That's the first item. And then the second item is your approval of adding a budget revision to the agenda, Budget Ordinance Amendment B-171-235. And I would ask that we add that as item F6, please, to the consent agenda.
Item two, F...
Six.
Six.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I hear a motion at this time to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item...
Is there a second?
Oh, I have a second.
Okay. All right. It's moving second to approve the agenda now. It's a discussion. Something you want to pull?
Yeah, I just want to pull item 4A.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. That's my fault.
Okay, item four... All right. Well, let's take item 4A first. Does the board want to pull 4A? It's purely a board decision.
Is it for discussion, or is it off agenda?
Uh, I don't know. I tell you what, let's... How are we going to do this? We've got a motion on the floor to approve the agenda. Why don't you make a substitute motion? Or, I tell you what, let's just withdraw the motions, okay?
Yes, sir.
Everybody fair with that? Okay. No motion on the floor. Okay, let's do this. Make your motion again with the exception of 4A. How about that?
Okay.
That work?
That works.
Mr. Chairman, may I offer a friendly suggestion? Let's approve the agenda. That is the agenda. And then on the consent agenda, we pull 4A for discussion.
Well, it's not only consent.
Donald says it's on...
Oh, 4A is not on?
It's way back in the...
It's on the under-nominations?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Make your motion.
I move that we approve the agenda with the exception of 4A.
Okay, second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the agenda with exception of 4A. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. Now, as to pulling 4A, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I was contacted last week by the hospital board. This is actually a board decision to make. However, the process has always been, and I think this was just put on by error, excuse me, put on by an error because they didn't know of the procedure, and that the nominating committee from the hospital meets and makes the nominations, then it comes to the board. There's actually going to be three nominations coming from that nominating committee, including this one. So I would ask to table this, let that nominating committee do its work, and it comes back to this board.
Okay, is that a motion?
I think if there's some discussion. If not, that would be the motion when that gets there.
Okay, is there a second?
Jerry, what?
The motion is to pull 4A.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded for 4A. Any discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I guess this should probably go to the attorney. This happens to be a midterm, midterm replacement, but this is completely a commissioner appointee. Does that have any relevance in this at all? As opposed to someone who's fulfilling a term and starting up a new term and the nominating process comes through? It is for a person who vacated their position, voluntarily resigned, and a new position had to become in. Would that make any change in the procedure?
I'm not aware of any differentiation in the bylaws and the corporate documents about how appointments are made, so it would be the same process.
Is it the same process we use with other agencies, the Board of Health?
It's not necessarily the same process used with other agencies, but it's the process that's for the hospital trustees.
Okay, thank you.
Hospital trustees are a little special because it is a corporation. There are a number of corporate documents that control this stuff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
There are a certain number of appointees, if I remember correctly, when we formed this corporation, that are appointed by the commissioners. For example, there's a nurse appointee by us, and there is a nurse appointee by the hospital board. It would appear to me that we don't need, if it's our appointee, which it is our appointee, that we don't need any kind of permission from a nominating committee of the total board. That that's our appointee. So we don't really need to send this through a nominating committee, as I see it.
I don't think that you would take action to send it to a nominating committee. I think that's just been, that's the practice, to my understanding, of all the appointments that you've made, including the ones that were made by the commissioners, but you are not bound by that recommendation.
Go ahead.
And I do agree with you, Mr. Edge, that we do not have to wait on that. The other two also commissioners' appointment. But if the process has been in the past, that that's the way we do it, I don't understand why we would deviate from that process on this particular appointment. The process, the process. If we're going to start deviating, then we don't have a process. So I believe that the correct way for this board to do, if we're going to set policies, processes, and procedures, is to be able to follow them. Otherwise, we get to the point that it really doesn't matter what we decide up here. It changes from day to day, moment to moment. I think we have to do what the process is. It has nothing to do with who the appointment is or anything like that. It's just that I believe if there is a procedure and a process, we ought to follow. And that's my opinion.
Any other discussion? Go ahead. Recognize, Mr. Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, this has been a... This has been something that has come up within the last few years. The hospital has not always had a nominating committee. In fact, I believe for the first few years, I was adamantly opposed to them because having a nominating committee, because it was our appointment. As are all the appointments, our appointment. But this one usually comes through the nominating committee, and it has been vacant for some time. I don't think anybody has a problem with the person. I would expect that the nomination would still come back if it went through the nominating committee, that the same nomination would come back. But we would just have all three at the same time, in two months. We'd skip October, and then we would do it, I believe, in November or December. We would have that appointment. But I was opposed to it. When it was first suggested, it was not with this administrator. It was with another administrator that we had prior to this one. So it's been at least eight years ago that that process has been in place. So I don't know.
So if we were to wait on the nominating committee, when would these individuals take their position?
In two months, in January.
In January?
Uh-huh.
And I think there's only two meetings left for the hospital board, and I think this position's been vacant at least three, at least three months, if not longer.
No, it's been longer.
Yeah.
So, okay, so, don't let me cut off anybody else. So if there's a... If a vacancy comes up midterm, we consider ourselves powerless to fill that until the nominating committee meets? Is that basically what we're saying?
Well, I can't remember to push the button.
Go ahead. I recognize.
I can't remember. This vacancy occurred during the spring.
Yeah, months ago, yeah.
Months ago, yes. And if it had been that urgent, we probably would have filled it then. But since we do have two more to nominate, I don't see any reason why we couldn't get them all at the same time. Three. They would all go through the process at the same time. They would all have the same inauguration, not inauguration, I'm thinking about the presidency, briefing at the same time, and they would tour the hospital, et cetera, et cetera, at the same time, because all three are our appointees, and all three would have used the same process. Now, however, if this name did not come back for a person who is being considered for that, I would expect a nomination from the floor because for that person.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have something else.
Mr. Edge?
The other two, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking through the list now, are reappointees?
No, I don't think Ernest Curry is. He's got to come off the board. And Betsy Bradshaw was a reappointed.
Okay. Yeah, Betsy's a reappointed, so she's automatic then, probably. And I don't even see Ernest's name listed on here.
He's the chair, so I don't know.
I know.
Mr. Counsel?
There's no nomination because the nominating committee has not met.
Okay.
So we would have two brand-new nominees and one reappointment, should we decide to reappoint that person, whether or not it comes through the nominating committee. It's kind of cumbersome because all the appointments are our appointments, every single one of them. But we have used the process. I don't know. Sometimes I agree with, sometimes 90% of the time, we agree with whoever makes the nomination, whichever group makes the nomination, whether it be the Library Board, Social Services Board, Health Board, or whoever they recommend, most of the time.
It and Bradshaw, a hospital appointment. I don't have any...
No, I think all three of them are.
They're ours, okay. They're all ours. Okay, is any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of pulling 4A from the agenda? Raise your hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Keefe, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Council, and Commissioner Evans. Voting in opposition, Commissioners Edge and Faircliff.
Okay. Motion passed. 4A is pulled from the agenda. Okay, item two, Ms. Council.
Before we go to item two, Mr. Chairman, may we do the recognition?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you this morning for allowing us to take a little bit of time and do a very special recognition. In light of the event that we were involved with last week, I thought we should take the opportunity, that we would be remiss otherwise, not to recognize the staff involved in that flooding event. And for me to have an opportunity to share with you how professional each of these employees carried out their job duties and functions in that event. Unlike a hurricane, where you kind of sit and wait, and you can do some advanced planning, that's not the case with torrential rains that ends up in flooding. You basically have to rely on your training, and your expertise, and your COOP document. That's a true test of the strength of your planning and the backbone of your system. I had the opportunity on Thursday to spend quite a bit of time in the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, and I'd like to share with you what I observed that day. There was a tremendous amount of activity going on in the room. The phones were ringing off the hook, but there was a sense of calmness in that room. There were a multitude of folks in the room from many different departments, but they were coordinating and interacting like they worked in the same department and interacted each and every day. They were very, very professional. As you can see, it takes a village to take care of our citizens during an emergency event, and at the risk of leaving a department out, I just want to tell you a little bit about the departments that are involved. Of course, you have your emergency management staff, Mr. Gene Booth and Melvin Lewis. And then you have your 911 staff under Mr. Randy Beeman and Mr. Tim Mitchell. We also had information services staff. The backbone of everything is technology, and technology has to be working. So we had information services staff in the EOC as well. Social services and the Health Department play a critical role in these events, and that's why I asked them to come here today. Many citizens aren't aware, but when we open shelters, the shelters are manned by Department of Social Services and our Health Department staff, which means that our staff leave their homes and leave their families to come and take care of our community and our citizen families that are not able to stay in their homes. And that's a tremendous sacrifice. We had Sheriff's Office staff in the EOC assisting with planning and coordinating and answering phones. We also had our Public Information staff, and each of you are aware that our Director Sally Shuck plays a critical role, but Sally was at an important family function in Georgia and could not be here. John Souls and Claudia Severs stepped in the breach, and they made her proud. We also had people, departments involved on the back end, Engineering Department that goes in to help us with assessing floodplain information and structural integrity of homes, so that we can determine if our citizens can return to their homes. And Tax Administration that goes in and does the assessment of the damage. There are other departments that are involved, but truly, this event was handled with the utmost professionalism. When I talked to our Social Services Director early Thursday morning, I said, "We're probably going to open a shelter," and she said, "We were already planning. We had it staffed at 6:00 a.m." And so those are the type of things, as a manager, that you like to hear and you like to see. And so, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to ask everyone that was involved in the event to please stand.
Mr. Chairman, if I could do it, I think, not to cut off the manager...
But please do cut me off.
But, you know, when they all stand, it's just like all of them are standing.
Okay.
If you could go back through the departments, I think people ought to know exactly which departments, and then they can stand. And I think that gives them a little bit of knowing where their agencies were.
Okay, first of all, I would like to recognize our emergency management staff, Gene Booth and Melvin Lewis, please. The Director of 911 and Emergency Management, Mr. Randy Beeman. We have Information Services staff here. Please stand.
David.
David Wilk. Public Information, John Souls and Claudia Severs. From the Department of Social Services. Please stand. We also have...
Can I interrupt you, Ms. Manager? Let them call their names out. I don't know every one of them by name.
Mary Farmer.
Linda Thanny.
Vivian Tox.
Crystal Black.
Monty Redden.
Sarah McCord.
Richard Dachter.
Valerie Beeman.
Crystal Yawick.
Nancy Carter.
Mary.
Randy Drum.
Lisa Chance.
Vanessa McFlunberg.
Al Foot.
Now give me a hand. We didn't rehearse any of this.
From the Department of Public Health, please stand.
Name.
You know the drill, Buck. Buck Wilson.
Len Tarpe.
Greg Phillips.
Elaine Sesma.
Joseph Smith.
Sharon Gaitan.
Daniel Wood.
Daniel Ortiz.
Mary Brown.
Linda Cousy.
And we also, from the Engineering Department...
Who there?
I'm not sure if we have any...
Wayne Douglas. He's one out and done his session, so...
I'm not sure if we have anyone here from Tax Administration.
Did he go around collecting?
I also want to recognize Tracy Jackson, who was very involved in the event at the EOC as well. There's Tracy. And finally, the Sheriff's Office. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Counsel?
I am so glad that you did that. Until I had been a commissioner for two years, I think, or three years, I did not realize the entire process and how all of these staff were involved in any kind of emergency. I did not realize how much money it costs the county to do this, and how much time away from home that each person had to allocate. Our citizens don't know this, and they don't realize the service that you provide for the entire county. Sometimes, when we are asked to fund this project or fund that project or fund the other project, people don't know what the budget really contains. You are also staff that have not had, I am so sorry to bring this out to the public, but you have not had a permanent livable wage increase in some time. And yet, you are committed that in some citizen's worst hour, you are here to give up your own home and take care of your own families to come and take care of greater Cumberland County. It is amazing to go down in that center and see what happens. But even as a commissioner, I didn't really understand it until it happened, and we had to sign the emergency documents. So, Mr. Chairman, we know that you were in Washington doing part of this and directing things from afar. Your vice chair, and your manager, and the staff, and all of these departments with their regular jobs took over. And I'm asking, hopefully, our reporter to whom we are not supposed to ask to write anything...
Oh, he'll write something.
But inform our community what is happening, because this is more than 50 people that were involved. And I, on behalf of my grandson, my dog, who is my cat, and my family, thank you for all that you have done. They were safe, and I was secure knowing that you were on the job.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman was in Washington, DC, and I got the call, and I had never been down to that room. And I was just talking to Commissioner Edge. It is a daunting task when you have to sign these documents declaring an emergency and all of this. But I will tell you that all of you that worked down there did an excellent job. But it also starts with the manager who made the call to me. And I want to thank Ms. Amy Cannon for her leadership throughout this whole process. I think that everything runs smoothly because of all that's involved, but there has to be somebody that's maintaining the ship. And she did an excellent job in that and guided me through the process, Mr. Chairman, because, like I said, this is the first time I had ever been down there and didn't know what to do. So if y'all believe I know everything, I don't. And because of her... I heard the big laugh at the end. But, and then she went one step farther. I want her to understand, I think, the significance of it. After being down there, she came back to her office and called all the mayors that were involved in this situation, and personally reached out to each one of them. And I think that gave them some reassuring confidence that this board and this county is for every municipality in this community. that this board and this county is for every municipality in this community. And Candace was there to send out information. Everyone, I think Rick was there, everyone, this is a team effort. No one person gets this done by themselves, so I do want to thank everyone for your entire, entireless efforts, because while we were sleeping-